I'd like to call the town in Naples planning board for Tuesday, April 15th, 2025 to order. First order business is to stand and join us in the pledge allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. In attendance this evening, we have Sue Fleck, Martina Witz, Marty Zatarian, Robert Fogg, and Jim Allen as members of the board, and we have Kathy Eddy from Code Enforcement Office is here, and Kathy Tomorelli, our town planner, is here. Item 2A, do any of the board members have any conflicts of interest with any of the items on the board this brought in front of the board this evening?
No.
No, no, six no. Thank you. Item three is to review any minutes, and we don't have any minutes, so we'll skip over that guy. That's a wonderful meeting. Thank you Kathy for being caught up.
You're left, buddy, now.
All business, we have nothing at the moment. We're going to switch items five and six around. It's because someone from, I guess, San Brown is going to be a little bit late getting here.
He's coming.
Okay, so we're going to jump over to six for new business, so I thought you were going to have a little bit of time to relax. Who's here for the 6A is a request by Naples Retreat LLC for a sketch plan application for proposed major subject, sorry, for a proposed major development to be located at 386 Lake House Road, shown on Naples map lot R05-09 in the rural zoning district. Is anybody here for that project this evening? Awesome. Why not step up to microphone, let us know who you are, and give us a little guide for the project, please.
Absolutely. So my name is Sebastian Libanati. I'll tell you right away if you don't understand what I'm saying, or my accent, the accent's from Montreal. We've been here for about six years with my four kids and my wife. Fell in love with the state about six years ago and decided to move. Couple of months ago, we bought the property on 386 Lake House Road, so I have a few, maybe a few comments here, and happy to take any questions. So well, first of all, thanks for having me here. Thanks to the town for a lot of patience. I had a lot of questions in the last few months, and I promise at some point in the year I'll be able to tell your names exactly correctly, because there's multiple cases with different pronunciations here. Thanks for the neighbors, for the letters, and being here today. Number two, I just want to make it clear, because I think there's been maybe some miscommunication on my end. I'm not planning or proposing to build any multifamilies, not at all, not even close. It's the extreme opposite, I want to say. I think part of the reason is, before we purchased the land, I asked Sebaggo Techniques to, you know, do a report, a due diligence report, on what was really possible to do with the land, and for some reason they used, and they mentioned multifamily. And then we hired a different engineering company, and Andy couldn't be here today. He had a conflict of schedules. And so we basically put together a sketch plan with the goal of really being here and having, you know, giving me the opportunity to talk about the project and get all the feedback. Then I realized, when I received some feedback, that it, for some people, it looked like we wanted to build multifamilies, and it's really not what it is. So the reason why we're here is really to gather information, be mindful of any development that we wish to do in the future. The project itself, very simple, is we'd like to build a couple of cabins, small cabins. I don't know exactly, we don't have the final architecture, but we're talking about, you know, 5, 8, 900 square feet, single-family dwellings, that with the goal, obviously, to rent those cabins throughout the year. I don't know the exact amount that is possible, which is why we hire engineering company, and we wish to start all the survey work, go through MDP, Army Corps, and, you know, go through the entire process that we've done before for other projects. But really, the goal of the project is maximize privacy. That's number one. We fail if we don't do that, and I want to make sure, because we have neighbors, and I completely understand that if they, if they had in mind coming here today that we were proposing to build 12 multifamily buildings, I would be pretty mad myself, which is really not the case. We want to minimize environmental impact. We've developed a project in Kennebunk two years ago with MGM builders from Wyndham. We went through MDP and Army Corps, you know, we had a lot of wetland mitigation work to do. And, you know, it takes time, 12 to 24 months, but we care a lot about the environment. We, we want to minimize tree clearing as much as possible. Obviously, there's rules to follow, and, you know, the way we build driveways and so on, but that's definitely the intention. And really, the cabins, the goal is really for, you know, our guests, future guests, to really disconnect. They want full privacy, they don't want to see any neighbors, they don't want to see, even if we built four or five cabins, they don't want to see each other. That's really our goal, that's what we did in Kennebunk. And so, in a nutshell, that's really what it is. We are likely to have much less density than all the surrounding areas, that's our goal. And yeah, that's the only reason why we're here.
Could the board have any questions? Did really give us, we don't have a lot of information to go on yet as far as building sizes, or you mentioned 900 square feet, but there's not a whole lot of information. So we're just looking for what we would like to get from you, we need to get from you.
Yeah, yeah, and that was kind of the, say, the chicken and the egg is, we didn't want to do too much, because I wanted to sort of gather information and see what's really possible, which is why we created the sketch plan. And I want to be able to, and be here tonight and say, this is, you know, in an ideal world, and if I go back to the Sebaggo Technique, initial due diligence, I believe there's, there might be a possibility to build five to six lots, you know, respecting the 40, 40,000 square feet footage. And that's it, that's as simple as that, and, you know, operate those properties in a mindful way, and, you know, that's it. And hopefully, in the next, if I get some, whatever feedback I get today, we'll go back to the drawing board and forget about the sketch plan that got us here today, but really, put together those five or six cabins and the way we want to build it, with the driveway the way we want to build it, because as you see it today, there's also, I think, multiple straight lines into Lake House Road, which is really not, not the intention. It was really just to get here and start the conversation. Ideally, we'll build just one driveway, a couple of properties well separated. We'll have a, you know, landscaping company taking care of, you know, creating buffer zones, and, which is critical for what we're trying to accomplish here, so.
So when you talk about clients and retreats, are you looking to subdivide this into individual lots? Or are you looking to keep it as one big lot with a bunch of cabins on it?
Yeah, it's a great question. I guess it's part of the reason why I'm here, what's possible. So here, I'm telling you today, if I can, in a night, if we can build up to five to six cabins, whether it's on a separate lots or in a single lot, I'm flexible. I just, you know, if, if it's one or the other, I'll let you know.
Well, you have, you have to pick the way you want to go, and then that gives us the parameters of, of the questions we're going to ask, like how big of the cabin's going to be?
Yeah, so I think if I get to pick, if both are possible, I'd say probably subdivide it and have it, you know, separate lots. Size of the cabins, I don't believe there will be more than 900 square feet, and hopefully less than that, much smaller cabins. So this is really for a couple, you know, one bedroom, bathroom, kitchen, very simple cabin. Beautiful cabins, though. If I can, then, you know, share a link of what we've built in Kennebunk, and you get to see really the quality of the construction, the architecture.
Just the asset.
Yeah, yeah, it's, I believe, if you.
I was going to recommend that we show those, if you're looking at doing similar structures, that we could do that when we come with a more formal package.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Mark, you.
Sorry, are you done, Jim?
Go ahead.
So you're not selling the lots?
No, no, I definitely don't want to sell.
Okay, so my, I'm struggling right now with what is permitted in the rural zone, and I'm struggling with what to define this project, and I don't see, what you're describing to me does not sound like it is a permitted use in the rural zone. What I'm hearing is that you're building something, I guess I'm going to say it's like the 1950s little cabins, where you would have a cluster of cabins along it, which is kind of like a, it's not a motel, it's not a hotel, it's a motor court, I don't know. What did they call that in the 1950s?
No, they called them a motor court.
Okay, so that's what, all right, let's use that. So I'm struggling with that, and that is not a permitted use in the rural zone. You're talking about, it's a business.
So to me, is, to be completely honest with you, at this point, because we're really early stage, the goal is see how many we can subdivide, and then depending on many variables, do we decide to, for instance, rent three, rent five, sell one, one specific, that's why I prefer the separating the lots and having the ability to sell if we wanted to sell.
Well, I mean, so if you sold it.
Residential units.
If you subdivide it, then it would be residential, which is obviously allowed in the rural zone.
Yep.
But nothing that I'm hearing right now sounds like anything that is a current permitted use in the rural zone.
Well, I, so what I responded to that question is, I do want to subdivide. I absolutely want to subdivide.
But you said, but not to sell.
So if I subdivide, I'm obligated to sell?
No.
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 So I'm not, so.
But you're still.
I want to own, so.
So what is it, then? So I anticipated this question, and that's why I put these definitions in your packet. If you look at the definition for commercial use, it's on page two of the memo. It specifically says, "The use of lands, buildings, or structures other than a home occupation", and then there's some other language, "exclusive of rental or residential buildings or dwelling units." And then if you look at the definition of dwelling and residential dwelling units, it says, "A room or group of rooms designed and equipped exclusively for use as permanent, seasonal, or temporary living quarters." And we, all the uses that are allowed in the rural zoning district is multifamily, duplexes, and residential dwelling units are all allowed in rural. So regardless of whether he subdivides it or keeps it on one site, they're all allowed uses.
Correct.
I hear what you're saying, because I went through the same mental exercise. It's not a hotel or a lodge, it's not, we don't allow event venues, we don't, you know, I went through this whole exercise, but if he's using it as if they're rental homes, it is allowed. Now, the other note, though, is that it doesn't really matter whether he divides them into separate lots or not as far as the review criteria, because it still triggers subdivision, because the number of dwelling units in a five-year period, three dwelling units or lots in a five-year dwell, period, so he is triggering subdivision. So we will be applying subdivision and site plan standards, both on this. Where it matters, it could matter, is if you're dividing it off on separate lots, now you're looking at, you know, are you going to do shared driveways? How are you going to configure it? And that will apply for the other two, though, as well. You're not going to have five curb cuts along Lake House. That's not going to work, because you don't meet the distance between driveways. So is there opportunity for a shared driveway? But the residential component is allowed, the all three units, all three of them, whether he went multifamily, which he's saying he's not, whether he went duplex, or whether he went single-family. The definition of a single-family, though, it has to have its own cooking facility and its own bathroom. So that's where it kind of departs from, if you were to have a retreat center where they went in and shared a kitchen, or shared meals, or had a shared bath house. That's not what he's proposing, he's proposing separate rental units. And we don't have any kind of short-term rental policy as far as the number of days either.
Only as far as ADUs go.
Only as far as ADUs, correct.
With a minimum lot size of 40,000 square feet for a single-family dwelling?
Yes, yes.
And 60,000 for a duplex?
A duplex, and 20,000 for multifamily, but you have to have an additional 10,000 per dwelling unit for a common area, so it's really 30,000. And so I think that's where Sebaggo Tactics, the part that was included, was a little, made the confusion. And then the site plan kind of matches as if it were multifamily, because it shows that you could have 13 units, and I think that's where the confusion is. So really, now, this math that Sebaggo Techniques did is rough math. They did the deducts for wetlands and all the things that you need to do. But rough math, math shows six lots, or, yeah, six lots, six dwelling units total. So currently, and please correct me if I'm wrong, there's a single-family house and an additional building that was converted into a single-family, so there's already two. So total would be six in that case, if this math is correct. And we don't, this is very preliminary.
Yeah.
This is very preliminary math.
Ohio.
When, when we're looking at BH2M.
Can someone mute themselves, please? We're getting some background. Thank you.
It's a BH2M, and it has the.
Yeah, that's the engineering company that I was hoping Andy would be here today, so.
So when you're, I think, are you, is, are we looking at two phases? And the first phase is six units, or is it six units for this whole thing, and this is wrong?
No, I can explain, that's why I started with this, that is wrong. The goal is not to build any multifamilies. It's, the phase one, phase two was really done by Andy, that's why I'm here today. The goal is really to go back to the drawing board and see if we can fit five to six, depending on the square footage, multifamily dwellings, that's it.
On the whole piece?
On the whole, the 60 acres, yeah, okay.
I don't understand, I guess I'm done, so how many acres is it?
It's 16.
16, okay. But it's not all buildable, clearly, because you have wetlands near, near shoreline, and then there's a stream.
That's right, that's right.
But that's the fact they've accounted for the setbacks.
Yeah, yeah, they have accounted for that.
Look at the microscope, yeah.
Right, but I guess, and then to Kathy's point in the memo, that's a lot of, a lot of structures. There's a lot of septic's and.
So as I said, we're not, we're not doing.
Yeah, no, I know we're not at that point, but that is just going to, and I think you've seen the memo, and that's going to be a huge concern, I mean, that's a lot of.
So what I would, again, this is very preliminary, I would think if we were to build four to six cabins, and given the size, we might just have one central septic system, and one well, that's possible. It's feasible, it's probably better, but we have to go through, you know, the entire permitting work.
So is it, Kathy, let me ask you, is it, is it even an option not to subdivide? I feel like, so all of these structures on one lot with an, with an existing home already? It is possible, because in Naples, you don't have an ordinance that says that you can only have one single-family dwelling unit per lot. And that's very typical, a lot of towns don't have that, it's based on how much land you have. Because some people want family compounds, for example. So it, you are able to do multiple dwelling units on one lot, but you just have to meet the underlying square footage requirement.
And what about the frontage requirement? Because these aren't really cluster homes, and you have to have 100 feet of front.
You have to have enough frontage on, but you've got two roads here, so you've got Gold and Lake House, so it's very likely, if this gets reduced to six to eight dwelling units, that you're going to have enough frontage. And you're also, they're also not going to be allowed to have all these multiple driveways, so you'd be looking at some shared driveway scenarios. And I have to look at the driveway ordinance here, but I think you can count that towards your frontage if you're creating a named driveway. And every town's different on that, too, so I just want to verify that, but I, they allow you to count both roads in some cases. So I will have to check on those details, and that's going to, the reason why I don't know all these answers is we've got to fine tune this first, because then my gut reaction is there's no way you're going to have five curb cuts on Lake House.
No, no.
And I can see a way that you can do a shared scenario, so we can make it work, but.
It looks like there's about 1,000 feet on Gold Road.
Alone, right.
Given quick math.
Right.
Yeah, ideally, we would just go off of Gold Road and build that road, the new road there, and have the cabins on that side.
Yeah, on one side.
I mean, look, I'm happy to walk through the land, even with, you know, neighbors, you know, after this meeting, whenever, you know, people are available, happy to do that. It's a beautiful piece of land. Just wish we could do a little bit more with it and keep it private. We've got a lot of work to do.
So, can I ask you? So, what, what's your plan moving forward? I'm just trying to wrap my head around, I guess we kind of need to see what you think you want to do. Are you looking for comments from us for you to figure that out, or? At what point, like, you're not ready for us to come? It appears to me that you might not be ready for us to come walk it if you don't know what you want to do.
I think today, I've already, I think I have already a lot of information. The, I think we'll put together a sketch plan that reflects really what we're intending to do. That's number one. Come back here, if possible, get more feedback, and then walk the land with you guys. I don't know if that sounds like something we could do.
It feels like unknown is always scary. So if you do have a current project in the state, and there is information available that, and maybe you're marketing that, and making it something that Kathy can share with, with us, and maybe people who are interested in this, we have two letters in our packet.
Yeah, I've seen, I've seen.
Yeah, so there's people that are wondering what's going to happen, so. So maybe that would help them vision what is, what your vision.
Yeah, no, absolutely, I think also there's part of the concerns on environmental impacts, for instance. And Maine, and the Maine DEP is very clear, and Army Corps is very clear on all the steps, and I've been through those, and it's very extensive work to protect endangered species and so on, wetland mitigation, so we're going to go through that. That's probably the best way to answer those questions. And then when it comes to, you know, I guess, privacy and, you know, buffer zones, with the new sketch plan, I think they'll, they'll probably be better, you know? It's definitely not multifamilies. But yeah, that, you know, that's, that's where we're at right now, and definitely, we want to get started on surveys, because this requires a lot of time, we need, you know, multiple seasons. So we're going to get started with that and file it at the DEP.
Yeah, so I think what I'm trying to say, so is one, is a future site walk would be better for us, when we find out what the actual plan is, because that's usually when we go take a site walk, is when we have an actual, you know, plan before, so we can rope off an area, basically flag out an area, and we say, this is going to go over here, and this is going to here, and the road's going to come in through here, and those kind of things. So that's typically the time we'll come out and take a walk of the land.
And it seems like in the projects that I've had exposure to while I've been on the planning board, the buffer zones between the project area and the existing projects, the existing homes, is usually something that is, people like to know what, what's going to be left for trees and, and the separation with vegetation between existing homes and the new project.
Absolutely.
So that, I'm just sharing with you what I've seen for people, questions that people have, is that, is one that we answer most frequently, that lighting and noise. Those are the, seem to be the three most common questions that I've experienced.
Yeah, and I'll give you an example, there's really one property that is closer on Gold Road, and it's Beach Road, you know, on their side. We wouldn't plan to build anything close to that property, we would go to the other side of the driveway. Why would we? You know, we have no reasons, it doesn't make any sense for us. So we'll definitely take care of that as well. But yeah, and then other than that, for buffer zones, I think we'll just follow town ordinances, and they're very specific. And they, they are respected here on the plan, although it's not what we want to do. You know, they have accounted for specific setbacks.
Are you going to plan on using the waterfront for boating, for docks?
So, good question, so what I've, and I've owned this property just a few months, and I've talked to some neighbors that have been here since the 70s on Beach Road. It doesn't seem like a place where, I don't think anybody swims. There's a lot of seaweed, algae.
No foil.
Absolutely, so to answer your question, I mean, I don't, I don't think anybody swims there. If you ask me for boats, absolutely not, we're not planning to, I, I, I'm not even sure you can, you know, run a boat there, to be honest, it's, I don't think it's an option. So the waterfrontage, unfortunately, I don't think is very usable, which is probably why I paid the price that I paid, I guess, nobody wanted that property, to be honest. It was on, on the market for many, many months, I'm the only one who, you know, ventured on it. Yeah, so you can't really use the waterfrontage. We have a little dock, maybe eight feet. Can you use a paddleboard and a kayak? Absolutely, I think you can, but as much as you can do, yeah.
This was posted as a public hearing?
Yeah.
No, not for San Brown?
Yeah, just for San Brown.
Oh, okay.
It's just a, kind of a sketch plan.
Oh, okay.
I just have a couple of things. There is the possibility here, depending on how creative his engineer gets, there's possibly that he could divide off one lot, you know, and have something on one lot, so that you have the ability to sell or do something different later, and then you have four or five cabins on the remainder. I mean, there is variables here that could happen. I think the waterfront question is interesting, it's something that we will need to run by marine safety as far as, but my understanding is you can have one dock per frontage. Right now, he has one, so potentially, yes, he could have a dock, but that has bearings on, on how you run this as well.
It's a dock per 20, it's a boat per 25 feet.
Feet, yes, okay.
If you have two docks, if you have the double.
Double frontage, so, I mean, I don't, why, we don't want him to publicly give away something that he might be able to have, do you see what I'm saying?
Right, yeah.
So, so don't give that away, because it might be an option, but there's regulation regarding that as well. And that'll depend also on what that looks like, is, are these individual lots? How is this going to play out? So there's a lot of unknowns, but we want to get him on for sketch plan just so we can get all these questions out here, because he has a lot of homework to do. The biggest things in my list is access, density, of course, that's the biggest one. How many are we talking about here? How many lots or dwelling units are we talking about? Then access, and then, obviously, there will have to be some sort of fire suppression, so as, I'm guessing in small cabins, you don't want to put individual ones, so is there going to be a cistern or some other way? Is there a way to access the water with the dry hydrant? I don't know all these questions, but that's a fire department question. And then utilities are required to be underground, if it is a subdivision, which it is a subdivision, regardless which way we go. And then septic, or is this going to be an engineered system for all of the cabins, if it's one parcel, or are you going to have separate septic designs for each one? And then the separation between well and septic, too.
But it doesn't even have to be engineered if it's only six cabins, one cabin.
That's right, if it's, if they're one bedrooms.
It's 90 gallons a day per bedroom.
Yep, so that, then that's something that you're going to want to talk to a site evaluator about once you get to that point. So there's a lot of variables, when I'm listening to you guys, it sounds like that you want them to fine tune this a bit more.
Absolutely.
And then come back for preliminary plan, because this does satisfy the sketch plan requirement. Come back for preliminary plan, and perhaps schedule a site walk and a public hearing at that meeting. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, yes. They'll have a better idea.
Of what's going to be.
Can I ask just one question for that next step, so that we don't miss anything? Would it be possible, so we, we will redo the plan? Is it okay if we don't have the, the final architecture of the structure, but we do have, you know, a range of square footage?
For preliminary.
Yes, yes.
Right, okay, okay.
And like an elevation, if you have an example, like your prior project, or if you're going to do something different, just an elevation can be really helpful of what they're going to look like.
Wouldn't the real fork of the road here be whether it's going to be subdivided or going to be individual lots?
No.
Yeah, I didn't hear it.
Say it again.
Would it, is the real fork of the road whether it's going to be one lot with these multiple structures, or is it going to be subdivided for his capability to sell each individual parcel?
Not really, to be honest with you. And the density is the density.
Okay.
It's going to make a difference for him for setbacks, though, because he's going to have to meet those 20-foot setbacks, so you're chewing through more land, right? That's why I threw out there maybe one or two lots, and the rest are on one parcel, you know? That's, that's a possibility to give you some flexibility.
And are there any, any other concerns with what I've said today that, you know, might be a red flag, or is a problem to you?
I don't see, I personally don't see any, yeah.
Do I need to read the letters that came in with this?
I would read the letters, but it is not a public hearing tonight, so if there are folks here for that application, you will get the opportunity, when it is a public hearing, to, to make your comments, when we get a more refined plan. But it would be probably good to mention the letters that you did receive before this meeting.
And whoever, any of my neighbors are here, would love to meet you.
I don't know who you are. I, yeah, I'd be happy to meet with you today and, and later on, walk the land. We, the properties we own, we have amazing relationships with the neighbors, and I completely understand why you're here, and.
I, I already know the land, and I just wonder how you can, do what you, well, you definitely can't do what you proposed.
I don't wanna do that.
Because of where the river is and how it branches off. And I'm concerned about just the water, you know?
Yeah. There's a rental for three houses down. And he uses a private home, and he rents the house. And he, there's noise all the time, there's fireworks, they're trying, even though they're on vacation, I get that. But it's not quiet. We've been coming up here for twenty-six years. And we own property on Busy Bee, we own property on Peach. And another thing, we mentioned the mill oil. Our Savago Cove has independently raised almost thirty thousand dollars to hire New England Mill Oil to come in and open up our coves and stuff, E L A. Joanne's up there, and she's, Joanne Brown, and she's the one who headed this all up, to organize all this. But we've spent, we're, are spending a lot, a lot of money in the water quality. So the boats, and it's super, super heavy where you.
Yeah, I know.
So to chop it all up and to kinda go against to what we're trying to do, to keep the, just keep the.
What would make it go against, just to set I'm clear, because we don't, we're not planning to use the water at all?
Well, I've seen kayaks back there, but we're talking about motorboats, and the motorboats, sometimes motorboats can get in there. But mostly party boats. And party boats can get in there.
Party boats?
Like, pontoon boats.
They don't take a lot of water. There's a law come up there in public area, during index meeting? You can say all those, all those things in public area. And then you'll have everyone who wants to have an opportunity to speak about the project, and they can share that.
And nothing's stopping them from meeting on their own.
Absolutely, yeah, you can absolutely meet anytime you want.
If you have a few minutes now, I'd love to meet with you.
Sure.
You guys can get together whenever you want, that's absolutely fine. I'm just trying to keep the proceedings going.
So if we're not gonna let the public speak, why, we're gonna read letters from the public?
I think that, I think that's a good point. We could, we could put those into the record all at the same time, I agree.
So we'll save those for the next time, it's time during the public hearing.
Or when we schedule a public hearing. And those may change as well, once they see a more solid project as well. They may have less input.
Okay.
Thank you.
If you'd like, you have another question for us?
Nope, I'm busy.
If you have a little bit of homework to do?
A lot.
Thank you for coming in tonight.
You guys move this to hallway, if you want, if you guys wanna teach us that as well, if you want a little bit more of intimacy. But, right, the front is, yeah.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, next, next item we have under new business is, full set?
Yeah.
It's gonna be B for a request by Tom, by Mitchell Thomas, for an amendment to a major subdivision by creating one additional lot located on King Hill Road and Overlook Way. Excuse me, the shown on map lot R zero four dash forty-two dash four, in the rural zoning district. Excuse me, is somebody here to speak about that tonight?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Hold on up and let us know who you are and what's going on, please.
Good evening. My name is Mitchell Thomas, long time Casco resident. But my, I'm here representing my fiance, Brittany. She bought seven point nine two acres on Overlook Way in Naples. And we're just looking to, Overlook Way actually cuts the property almost in half. And we're just looking to split the lot to a four point four, seven acre piece. Showing us lot four A on the plan that Wayne Wood had done, and three point four, five acres for lot four B, which is the side that goes back down towards King Hill. So just a simple lot split.
Split it right where the road goes through?
Yep. From what I can tell, forty-two-two, forty-two-three, forty-two-five, and forty-two-seven have already been split in the same manner.
How long ago was this subdivision approved?
The original subdivision? I believe nineteen eighty-six.
Eighty-six.
Does he even need this subdivision?
He does. He's still under subdivision law, and it wasn't approved subdivision plan. It's interesting that you say that, because I only pulled one lot division off of the registry. So I, now I have a little bit more homework to do. But I had it, and I'll check, I'll check and make sure and verify that I had this as originally a seven lot subdivision in nineteen eighty-six, approved by the planning board. And then I have a lot division in nineteen ninety-something, oh, no, twenty-twenty-one, actually, for splitting one of the lots into two lots. They did it the long ways, instead of by the road.
That was the town acquisition lot, I think.
Yeah, was it?
And they gave it to the, the two little ones, they gave to the Butters. From the research I did, there was another one done in April of two thousand and five, and then there was another one. I don't know what back my other notes.
So the answer is yes, because it's an approved subdivision plan. They have to come back to subdivide. I only had a few items, if you'd like me to go through those. I'm quite familiar with Wayne Wood. I, he's, I have his planner in Bray in Gloucester, and he does the majority of his work there. No issues at all with the survey. He filled out the application as well. It looks like he put a lot of things that are not applicable, as well as supplied by the applicant. A lot of this was supplied as part of the original subdivision plan. Really, the only concern that I have, and this has been a concern townwide, is what happens when major subdivisions get divided off a little over time? What about fire protection, right? It was not required in nineteen eighty-six. So there is no water, there's no cistern that I'm aware of. I did speak with the fire chief, and he's gonna take a ride up there, so when we get to the next phase, we'll know if he's gonna require, he might have water nearby, you know, or another cistern, or access to another, or he'll look at the condition of the road, I'm sure, as to what he needs up there. We're not, we're not looking to make him do a cistern for the entire subdivision here. But he is dividing off another lot. So will the fire, and that's up to the fire chief. The ordinance is pretty specific. It says that they need to have water storage for a major subdivision. It doesn't specify what type of water storage. The chief might look at it and say, you know what, I'm all set. Or he might say, oh, we got, you know, X amount of lots up here now, and I don't have any water. So that'll be up to him to, to make that determination.
Can I just add, add one thing? I'm a lot owner up there myself. And my understanding is, is that if we, if they're, if they're able to subdivide, that the road has to be up to a certain standard. That was my only concern here tonight.
That's another thing on my list, is what is the current road? It's a private road, and in Naples, these roads are private roads. What is the road standard that it needs to be built at, once we get this, to this many lots? Private road standard is pretty loose in Naples, so I, up to this point, what my understanding is, if, if public safety can get up there, and there's not any stormwater issues, does there need to be a turnaround, that type? Is, is there a turnaround?
There is a turnaround, and the road has, we, three of us, only three of us on the road have, we did upgrade the road this fall. Pretty good.
And my understanding, there's no road association as well?
There is not, at the moment.
This is an existing road feeding these two lots.
That's correct.
This was a rolling, this was a rolling tail subdivision.
I do know that.
Okay, just so you know.
So I guess those are my questions. What has, and this is a question for me, because I haven't been here. What have you done in the past, when you have amended a major subdivision to add additional lots? Particularly these older subdivisions that didn't have the fire safety standard or a specific road standard?
Typically, we've just approved the subdivision, especially if it's existing road.
Yeah.
Stuff like that. With, you know, the fire mo, uh, fire chief.
Sign off. Yeah, and I, I spoke with them today, and we would love to have more clarity in the future. Minor subdivision, no. Major subdivision, yes, or four lots or more, or whatever that is. But right now, as it's written, the subdivision ordinance says the fire chief has the, the say. So I think that this conversation.
Justin, with Justin.
Justin.
Yeah, Justin.
And I've already talked to him initially, but we're gonna take a ride up there, look at the road, see if he, you know, for fire rescue, et cetera. You know, public safety purposes, whether or not it's fine. But it's tough when you have these old subdivisions, right? And they're dividing off one lot, but there's other lots that can be divided too. So how many lots do we end up there? But I think, I think basically, this is a pretty simple one. Just that one element is the issue.
Now, I have a, just a quick question to you. Does the fire suppression even come into play until there's a structure built? Does that, does it have any bearing on just a simple lot split?
No, that's a good, that's a good question, but, but, but typically on a subdivision amended plan, it will say fires, protection is required on lot, whatever it is, to be provided by.
And that could just be even sprinklers in the house.
N F P A sprinklers, correct. That, that's what I think that, if he determines that there's not enough water up there, that's likely the path that he will take. I can't speak for him. So typically, so we, yes, the answer is yes, you would need to know that, because eventually you're gonna do a house, and eventually we need to have that on the plan, that lot, or in the findings, that lot, whatever it is, requires a sprinkler. And then the code officers will see that, and when they're ready to issue the permit, they'll say, oh, yes, we need to have a sprinkler for this house. But until we do a little bit more, until we do up there, go up there and see what's there. But that's my gut reaction.
I think he'll be satisfied with the road. We did a, we did a major this, this fall. On it. Desperately need to know.
And so with that, I guess my question for this one is, A, do you want a site walk? B, in your ordinance, in order to have preliminary plan approval, you have to decide whether or not you're gonna hold a public hearing. And, because if you wanted to have one, then you would need to schedule it before, we'd have to do the advertising before the next meeting, right? So that's up to you guys to determine that.
I don't feel the need to personally walk it, like anybody else does.
Who's having an opinion on that?
I don't feel the need to.
Okay.
I remember doing at least, if not two of the previous ones.
And then I have another question for you. Have you, on an amendment for a major subdivision, ever allowed them to do preliminary and final in the same meeting?
Yes.
Okay. That, that's what I'm getting at, is whether or not we wanna do this as a final application at the next step, if we have all the information.
Yep.
Okay?
Makes sense.
Other than that, I have nothing else for this one.
Sounds pretty straightforward, yeah.
No? Okay. So.
Does that mean we're wrapping preliminary and final in the one?
Organize that.
Certainly can.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Certainly can, as long as everything is, yep, in that, in that meeting.
Yep.
Certainly can.
So we'll follow up with the fire chief and what we need to do with that, okay?
So you'll let me know next meeting?
One week next, sometime in the next week or two, because we gotta, we gotta get you on the agenda, and.
Yep.
So, okay?
Excellent. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Powerpoint is the second one, yes?
Is it going?
No, it's on one. Yeah. So that's it?
Yep.
And then you're gonna hit share screen, and it should share. You could, you could copy it onto your desktop, and be able to read to you.
Hey, we didn't get a bigger one. It was the largest bigger one.
I know. I saw that.
Hey, hold up, Cam. Wait for these guys.
Kathy Tomorelli, can you get us the link from that first guy?
The, yes, yes.
The one you did down at Kennyburgport?
Yes, I can.
I think I've heard about his.
What did you ask for?
The link for the first guy that was here?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
To his property in Kennyburgport?
Yeah, thank you.
Because I believe a buddy of mine has told me about this project.
I think we're ready.
That's basically what you were asking for, to, to, are you ready?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I think if they made it access to the neighbors, it would help.
And this is a public hearing.
Yep. Good evening again, everybody. Our next item on the agenda is gonna be, for item five, there was a table, for item five is table business, a request by C N Brown for a site plan review for a proposed new five thousand square foot convenience store and fueling station to be located at ninety-nine Roosevelt Trail and shown on the map lots U zero six, U seven, and U zero six dash eight, in the commercial, uh, commercial zoning district. And this is also gonna be a public hearing that we're gonna open up. So we'll be opening up a public hearing, and.
He's gonna share first, I think, before we open up a public hearing.
If that's, okay. Um, I'm not happy to wait to, whatever, whatever the board, whatever the board.
Nope, that's.
We need to start from the first.
Yes, please.
So, there's a few legal procedural points that I wanted to address with the board. Obviously, Energy North has been represented before this board, and also took an appeal to the Board of Appeals. Didn't see anything further from them, and don't see that they're in attendance this evening, but we certainly do not know exactly procedurally what's gonna happen next after this meeting. And so from my perspective, on C N Brown's behalf, I'm gonna address those legal issues on the record at this meeting, and maybe even request some findings of fact and motions to be made, to complete the record. Obviously, it's up to the board, whether you choose to entertain any of those suggested motions, or, or make them, or how you vote on them. But it's because of the procedural sort of mechanism by which we got here, that before we get into the substance and merits of it, I wanna address some of these things. First of all is the issue of whether really any further review is required, to the extent what it is. The Board of Appeals, when they took this up, they reversed and remanded to address one thing specifically. And that's clear in the, in the minutes, that this was to address the driveway width, which was for, approved by this board at forty-two feet. And the zoning, for the Board of Appeals, excuse me, determined that this board did not have the authority within the requirements and the guidelines for, you know, site plan review by the planning board, to waive that. And so it was sent back to, for a further consideration. The town manager and road commissioner had, had some original discussions, and was at the time okay with the forty-two feet. I think he's further discussed with M D O T, and his preference is forty feet. And as such, C N Brown is moving forward with forty feet, meaning that none of the points of error that Energy North found with this board's original decision are error anymore, because the one thing has been simply modified by C N Brown to just move forward, and hopefully, as efficiently as possible. And so as we move on, one of the motions I would ask the board to consider entertaining is that there does not need to be any further substantive review, because essentially, the exact same plan, with a little additional buffering, and I'll talk about that too, has already been approved. And there's no errors in what lawyers sometimes call the law of the case, meaning how a decision has progressed. And if this substantive decision has been made, that decision carries through. This board made a substantive decision on the original approval, with one error found by the Board of Appeal, meaning they rejected all of Energy North's other issues. So from the appellate body, there's no further problems. So that's one, one issue slash motion I'd ask the, the board to take up. The other, clearly closely related to that, is that those points of error originally raised by Energy North are not valid points of error, and this would just be essentially this board confirming, yeah, when we made that decision before, the zoning board upheld it except for one, one item, the driveway width. And so there's no further validity to those points of error previously raised, because they've now been vetted twice, once by us and once by the Board of Appeal. Couple new issues. Excuse me, or one, one new issue at least, is the issue of, there was an amendment to the zoning ordinance relative to this project, from a class-two buffer requirement to a class-three buffer requirement. I know one of the issues that was taken up through getting an, an opinion from legal counsel was whether that applies or does not. I've seen that opinion. I maintain that because of how this transpired, and in fact, at the Board of Appeal, it was said that we'd come back here with the same application, that it is in fact the same application. It is ultimately, from a practical perspective, the same proceeding, and as such, the amendment would not apply. And so I would ask the board to consider taking up that motion, that the, the class-three buffer requirement does not apply. Obviously, if it does, then we get to the process of deciding on whether there's a waiver. But again, this all goes. But again, this all goes back to the point of if we can address all of these once, whether it's yes, 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 or yes, no, yes, no, whatever it may be, we have a complete record so that if we do end up at the law court, we only have to go there once. As opposed to up back, up back in this is now a multiple year project with this board and C.M. Brown and time and money and hassle. So that's the, it's not an exercise in futility or just an academic exercise. It is an exercise from my perspective on behalf of C.M. Brown in attempting to maximize efficiency. The other issue that comes up related to the Class II versus Class III buffer is in looking through the minutes, it was discussed when that was sort of debated in past, that the Class III buffer was meant to be between residential and commercial districts. In the minutes, that's what it says. And here we are all within one commercial district. And so the other issue I'd ask the board to take up is whether it even applies at all regardless of the amendment because we're in one district. So it's not a buffer between a residential district where there's some residential homes and then a bordering commercial district with the business. There is a distinction between some residential properties and this commercial site. However, those residential properties are in fact within, the abutting ones, within the commercial zone. So those are, there are also some waiver requests, but candidly, I would leave those to Tom in his PowerPoint with regards to the driveway from 302 as opposed to Sand Road and then part. So those are addressed in a document that I filed that had a request, it was entitled Request for Findings and Rulings. Attached to that essentially in a similar format as to this board was a proposed notice of decisions. So between those two documents, it presents, it presented to this board the legal sort of questions we had that we're asking the board to take up and vote on to have a complete record. So that again, if we move beyond this point in any appellate capacity, whether ADB at the Superior Court or up to the law court, we can try to do that just hopefully once. So I'm happy to take any questions later on, but for right now, I'll leave it at that and we can continue to move forward. Thank you very much for your time.
Yeah, you're gonna put up a PowerPoint and-
Yeah, I know you were gonna, you start a public hearing where we were going, so I'm happy to.
I could respond, would you like me to respond to someone here first or would you like to hear from him first?
Nope, you sure could. Can I know that we've-
Me? No, I'll talk about me, they won't-
No responding to my question, okay.
I can respond to it to a certain extent. I'll start with the lower hanging fruit and that's the driveway entrance ordinance. Our attorney did confirm that we don't have the authority, you, we being the planning board, to waive a requirement that's in a driveway ordinance because it's not housed in site plan. So that was up to the road commissioner and you do have a letter in your packet from the road commissioner. I will say that in most towns, we've deferred to DOT permits, so that was what happens a lot of times. But the road commissioner did call M.D.O.T. and they said, well, actually you can apply your standard if it's more restrictive. And that's the direction the road commissioner did. He put the 40 foot and they have already changed it to reflect that in the application. So that's kind of a point in my opinion. The attorney also, our attorney, the town attorney, did say that it was a reversal of the decision. So it is a new application, which means it does open up discussion on the other areas. With that being said, we did go through the review process before. And the one point that seems to be the issue is the buffer, buffering standard. And to address what he just said, this is new, this is new ordinance that we had passed at the June election, I believe. There's, there's a, I wouldn't say a contradiction, but if you read it in buffering and landscaping, the purpose of the buffer is to provide buffering between adjacent land uses is what it says. So the house behind it might be in the commercial zoning district, but it's currently used as a residential. However, if you go over to F, it says the clap buffer shall be required between commercial and residential properties. So it's slightly differently worded and there is something to that different wording, if you will. And so if we do determine that, our attorney has determined it is a new application, I think that that is a good argument for a waiver though, to allow them to do the Class II. Because they already came before, now they're under a new ordinance. There is a little bit of difference in how it's worded in two different places. I think it makes sense. So that's what I have back, so the attorney did say that the new buffering standard does apply because it is a new application. That's what I have as far as what, what he has talked about so far. So with that, I think we could hear from Tom, the engineer, to address any of the other questions that had come up. One of them was an engineering question on the stormwater, I believe. Yeah.
Tom, Associate Site Design Associate, you're being kind by calling it an engineering question because it was obvious they didn't know what they were talking about. And I don't know if the board wants me to get into that in too much detail. I'm happy to. That was the letter from Archipelago at the last meeting. And I have a response I sent to Kathy here, but I can go through if you want me to.
It was in your, it should be in your packet. And I don't know if you have questions regarding that or not. That's just I heard that that was the one thing that we couldn't answer and our attorney can't answer that because we're not engineers, right?
Yeah.
We didn't have a chance to respond to it. Yeah, that's the letter.
Yeah. Yeah, it's an email.
It's an email.
Oh, they have my email?
Yes.
It's rather lengthy and not real good reading, but.
But it was written.
So should we, do you want me to go through that or you want me to do a presentation?
Did you want to reread that if you've all read it?
I've read it.
Okay, good.
So presentation.
I'm happy not to. You had said in your report, we would go through waivers first. Do we need to do that?
Not before your presentation.
Okay, all right. We just gotta figure out how to run this thing.
Did it work?
Yes. Does this have a pointer on it too or now it won't?
It did, yeah, I think it does sometime. I don't think you can see it very well with the glare.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
You can't. Okay. So anyway, the first slide, you all know where the site is, so we don't need to spend too much time on this one. Where am I gonna point this?
You want me to just do it for you?
Yeah, that'd be awesome. The next set in your documents is the boundary survey that was prepared for the project. It's actually consists of two parcels. One's 1.86 acres, the larger parcel, the other one's 0.65. The total development is 2.51 acres. It used to be a redemption center and a C-store, as you all know. Next, this is the required plan that shows all wetlands and other water bodies within 500 feet. Unfortunately, Crooked River is within 500 feet. This plan also shows the existing septic systems and wells on the lots. We were able to collect that data. Next, and this is just another version of the existing conditions plan. Next, and now we'll get into the site plan. Since the submission that you have in your packets, we actually added the different buffers to the plan. And to the south, we have a Class III buffer that, I'm not gonna be able to point for this, but the Class III buffer behind the store. Above the store near my way, a 10-foot buffer is required. We provided a 25-foot Class II buffer. At the end of my way along that property line, a 10-foot Class I buffer is required. We provided a 25-foot Class II. Along the Grays property, we provided 25-foot buff, Class II buffer. And that would be one spot where according to interpretation by the attorney, a Class III buffer would be required. And then along Mr. McConkey's property, there's also a Class II buffer is shown and a Class III buffer technically would be provided there. The Class III is provided in the detention area and there's a 10-foot Class I across the entire frontage. The project consists of a 5,000 square foot convenience store, 12 gasoline fueling positions, three diesel positions. It's in the commercial district where the use is allowed. The water will be provided by well, wastewater disposals by a subsurface wastewater disposal system under the parking lot. Two full movement driveways are provided out onto Route 302. Main DMT issued a traffic movement permit for this site and those driveway locations, those driveway widths. Of course, we revised it to 30 feet, 40-foot width for the road commissioner's direction. The perimeter of the paved, the rear paved area has a six-foot-high vinyl coated black chain link fence with PVC slats or will have. And we discussed that at previous meetings. There are signs shown around the perimeter of that area that say no overnight parking or long-term idling. We had talked about that at a previous meeting. And we also had to get a main DEP stormwater permit. We submitted a very detailed stormwater analysis. It was third-party reviewed by the Cumberland County Soil and Water Conservation District. Chris Baldwin, who's a professional engineer, he's a, he reviews, I think I mentioned at the last meeting, that he reviews most if not all projects in the Cumberland County portion of the Sebago Lake watershed. Next, the next plan is, we call it a utility plan. It shows the subsurface wastewater disposal system, the sewer piping, a well out inside the right away at 302. We tried to separate the well and the subsurface wastewater disposal system as far as we could. We are 300 feet from others wastewater disposal systems. Because we're a public water supply, that's the setback. The state has approved, given preliminary approval to the well. They can't final approve it until we drill it and then you have to do some testing, so that'll, that'll be coming. The wastewater disposal field has been preliminary approved by the state. There will be an advanced treatment unit in place prior to wastewater reaching the disposal field. Next, so this is the grading plan. It shows in more detail the, the stormwater will be routed to a grafted underdrained soil filter, which is on the left of the plan. That's the area on the left of the plan. Stormwater enters that, it infiltrates through a filter media, goes into some underdrains and then goes out. Because we're in the watershed of Sebago Lake, there's some pretty stringent standards we need to meet. After this development is in place, it'll be, it's based upon, you probably all know this, it's based upon phosphorus loading of the lake. And right now, the analysis shows that it's 2.24 pounds of phosphorus per year. We're allowed 2.34 pounds per year and we, our design results in 1.7 pounds per year. So we're actually less than existing conditions once this goes into place. The stormwater quantity or the rate of runoff is reduced to less than what it exists now. So that's a good thing for down gradient people and properties. Next slide. I'm not a landscape architect, but since we submitted the plan along the McConkey and Grays property lines because we're, have a Class II buffer and we're gonna ask for a waiver, we've really beefed that up with more shrubs and things of that nature. We increased the width of the class, the plantings and Class I buffers out front to 15 feet from 10 feet. And we added more plantings, so we really beefed that plan up. We increased the size of the deciduous trees to three inches, which is in the new code. So, next slide. This is just the floor plan of the store. If you're interested, this is typical store layout for C.M. Brown. Next slide.
I can see what's the length of the south side to the right?
52 feet, I think. I can't see it.
Is that a continuous space or is it broken off at all?
No, I will show you in a sec. Next. That's the front and the back, last planning board meeting where it was approved. We were asked to put in a window on the electrical room in the back, but you're not gonna see that really anyway from the highway. And that's a bump out there that you see with a window in it. And then next, so there's the street side with the windows with the shutters and the fenestrations. And then the other, the top one's the other end. And that's, there's gonna be a lot of plantings between that and the property line anyway. This is just a typical store. Next, I'd like to get a little better look at the store colors if we can. One more. Well, you can go back to the elevator if you're interested in colors. These are the standard colors. It's a gray slate stone clapboard, clapboards and the band around the top. Next slide. There's a photometric plan in your package that meets or exceeds the requirements for lighting in all property lines. The fixtures are full cutoff fixtures, which means they won't shine down off the site or behind them. And then the next slide is just the fixtures. So that's that. Any questions?
No. No, no, thank you.
Okay.
Kathy, I'll start.
I am.
Okay.
So administratively, there's a couple things you need to do first. You need to look at the waivers and grant waivers if appropriate. And then after that would be completeness. And then we can go into the, any questions with the specific elements of the plan. And so the applicant is requesting three waivers and please correct me, there's been so many pieces of paper. If I miss something or if I'm misrepresenting, please tell me if I'm wrong. The first one is the waiver from the frontage on two or more streets, 908.4E. And I have a motion on page four regarding that. And this is a waiver that you did grant at the first, first application that came in. Oh, they're all page four. How that happened?
I just realized I didn't like, they're all page four.
So it's a, is it go in a couple pages where it says waivers?
Did we grant this waiver the first time or this round?
We granted it for the first application.
But not the second round?
Yes, correct.
Second round is tonight.
Stay tonight, yeah. So we need a motion to- Yes. Grant, I'll make a motion to grant the waiver. Should I just read it exactly as it's written here or? That would be fantastic. Okay, where a lot has a frontage on two or more streets, the primary access from the lot must be provided from the street where there is less potential for traffic congestion. Waiver requested to allow, so I'll make a motion to-
Go on the next page. Sorry for interrupting.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry to interrupt you on the next page.
Oh, sorry. All of these A through H, A through H? Yeah, so, so the one, procedurally, the one thing that kind of got us in a little bit of a mess up is that you have to find that it meets the criteria for granting waivers. And we weren't specific enough and that's where we kind of got burned, if you will, on the appeal because we didn't go through each one of them. So this addresses the waivers specifically. So that's why they're crafted the way that they are. So I make a motion to waive the necessity of having the entrance be from Sand Road in favor of having the entrance on 302 with the following findings. A, the configuration of Sand Road and Roosevelt Trail intersection is unfavorable for having an ingress egress on Sand Road. B, Sand Road is predominantly residential in nature. C, input from residents on prior site walk against access on Sand Road as it is already being utilized as a cut through. D, stormwater management elements are located adjacent to Sand Road, which is furthest from the resource, the Crooked River. E, M.D.O.T. has jurisdiction over the highway and entrances in the project area while considering input from the town. M.D.O.T. has issued a traffic movement permit approving two driveways from Roosevelt Trail and no driveways from Sand Road. F, there will be no adverse effects on the neighborhood or the site. G, the purposes of the site plan review continue to be met, including protecting health, safety and general welfare of the residents of the community and promoting traffic safety. And H, the granting of the waiver will not adversely affect the abutting landowners nor the general health, safety and welfare of the town.
Second.
Give a motion by Martina and second by Jim for waiver number one. I'm just gonna categorize it as waiver number one. All favor? Five, five to zero to waive that?
I'd make a motion to waive number two Naples Land Use Ordinance 908.5. B. Move to waive the requirements that parking be located at the rear or side of commercial- Move to waive the requirements that parking be located at the rear or side of commercial buildings and allow the parking at the front with the following findings. The intent of the ordinance was to limit parking along the road frontage. The configuration of the store on the lot necessitates parking in the front of the convenience store. There will be no adverse effects on the neighborhood or the site by allowing the parking in the front of the store. The purpose of site plan review, which was to discourage parking along road frontage, has been met by allowing the parking in front of the store. The, see, the nature of the project and the site allows the store to be located to allow parking in front of the store while meeting the intent of the ordinance. D, the applicant has complied with the intent of the ordinance, and the waiver will not adversely impact the abutting landowners and the general health, safety, and welfare of the town.
Second. Okay, Jim has made the motion to approve waiver number two. It's seconded by Robert. All in favor? Five, zero to approve. Thank you.
If I may, on this third one, I just want to make sure, I want to make sure that we, I understand there's issues if this goes to court further, and so you had given quite a lengthy list of findings for a recommended waiver. Mine is much shorter, but mine was based more on the fact that this is a new application. And yours was kind of going through all of the things that you'd already done or the reasons why. So this one might be one that we might want to talk about a little bit. First of all, discuss whether or not it's something that you're okay with, I guess. And this one's the change, this is one of the changes. They're proposing a Class II buffer between the residential use in the back. They have buffed it up quite a bit, and they made it more robust, if you will, by adding the three-inch caliper trees, additional landscaping. But in that back area, it's not a Class III. On the side, it is a Class III. So they made it a Class III where they could. So you might want to discuss this before just reading through it to see if we're all on the same page, I guess, on this one.
Kathy?
Yes.
When you refer to side, are you talking about the piece that faces Sand Road? Is that side to you?
I'm, when I'm talking, the other side, if you look on the new plan that they submitted, I don't know if we can get back to that.
Yeah, that's the one I'm looking at. Yeah, so maybe if you could tell us where the, where you did.
Yeah, where you changed the buffers, that would probably help.
Which one would be the best slide for the?
Probably.
So see the difference here? The difference I've noticed.
Back, back.
Here, back one more.
Back one more, back one more.
Down.
Okay.
Is that it?
Yep. Yep, that's not the landscape plan, but that shows the buffers.
Awesome.
So.
I wish we had a pointer.
Yeah, yeah. They make, they have programs where when they hit the pointer, it puts a red dot right in the.
Right, if you went onto the side of it, you can get it, the red dot. So you can, in a minute, you bring it onto the TV, it goes away.
Yeah, so on this side.
Look into that one.
On this side here, the class.
Can you point to this one that we can see? It's behind you.
Oh.
Yeah.
Thought you guys were all just staring at me.
That's why I was looking above your head all that time.
So behind the store, a Class III buffer would be required, and it is provided. And on the landscape plan, you'll see we really beefed it up in there anyway, but there's some natural vegetation. Along my way, the two property lines along my way only requires a 10-foot Class I because it's a private way. And private and public ways require a 10-foot Class I. But we've got 25 feet there, so we exceed it in that area and pretty heavily planted as well.
That's the top of the page.
Lots across the graves in the back and Mr. McConkey's property, that required we have Class III under the new code, and we have a Class II. And we've really beefed that up since the last time. I know we haven't heard any objections from any of the butters since the last meeting and about the buffer that we're providing. And then along the front of Mr. McConkey's property and the side where the detention, soil filter is, that's a Class III buffer, and that's provided. And then there's a 10-foot Class I in front. So the only place we're not meeting the new buffer standards is along the graves and McConkey properties.
And when you say, so when you say you've beefed up, so you, the width of the buffer is the same, but you've added more plantings?
Added, yeah, more plantings, yeah.
So it's more like a two and a half instead of a three?
What's that?
It's more like a two and a half instead of.
You could call it that.
Two and, oh, I'm not pointing, if I apologize.
Just not clear with a McConkey property.
Oh, I'm sorry. There, okay, so along the back is the graves, and then McConkey's side line.
Towards Sand Road.
Towards the diesel canopy, along the diesel canopy, and then it goes along the front next to the soil filter.
Yeah, but like the bottom pond, yeah.
Well, from the original one that I have here to this one, it looks like there's a significant amount of more vegetation and being planted in there.
There is.
I'd also like to know if I may.
Like a two and a half?
Yeah.
If you've added a lot more.
If I may, I have not received any comments either by email or by phone regarding this project. Any of, actually, through the duration of this, I have not received any additional. The only comments I received were when we went to the sidewalk.
Oh, from the butters, you mean?
Yeah, yeah. Are we opening the public hearing?
And we haven't yet.
Yeah, okay.
And we haven't talked in a second.
Yeah, hold on.
If you're a little closer, that's a lot pointed toward me, that's why.
The other thing that I was just a little unclear about is, did you go to a Class III buffer at some points during this? Is that what I heard you say?
We delineated the Class III buffers under the new code where we could meet them.
Okay. That's what I thought I heard you say. So I, I'm on track. Thank you.
Can I just ask a question about that? And where you say where you could meet them, is the thing, is the thing that's prohibiting you from doing the Class III everywhere is the layout of the, of the driveway, of the whole parking and the?
Right.
Okay.
Circulation.
And all of that?
Yeah.
Do you have any comments from anyone that you?
Can I ask if Mr. McConkey has any?
We can open the public hearing. We don't have to sign on the waiver right now.
Yep. I gotta say, I'm the one that owns some, right along the, got away there, on McConkey property, and I have no complaints whatsoever.
I have nothing else.
I think there's something in your memo that comes from the code about circum, what's, I can't find.
Oh, you're talking about the waiver, the reasons for granting a waiver?
Yeah, and you put it in your findings.
Yeah, I did.
It's number four, I think.
Yep.
Or number D. The circumstances.
Yes.
It's not unique circumstances, but it's.
Well, they are unique circumstances.
But I mean, the word is, I think the word to Tom is looking more special circumstance.
Special circumstances.
Is that? I'm not just looking at Kathy's memo.
Hold on a second.
It's right above, it's on page four.
Yeah, it's 905. 905, 1A through D.
Yeah, it's D, right.
That we have to find that they meet. And if you're right, it says special. So we can change the word to special if you want to do that.
I just wanted to point that out, because the code being implemented since the last year is a pretty special circumstance.
I'm willing to attack the buffer if it's the appropriate time.
Do you have any more comments?
No.
Thank you.
I make a motion to, under Naples Land Use Ordinance 908.2A and 908.2. F. Motion to waive the require for, requirement for Class III buffering standard and allowing Class II buffer as depicted on the plans along the McConkey and Graves property lines for the following reasons. Site was previously used for a convenience store and fueling station. The applicant has provided a Class III buffer where practicable. A Class III buffer along the McConkey and Graves property lines.
Class II. Sorry, I dropped that one.
Sorry, Class II, sorry. Buffer along the McConkey and Graves property lines meets the purposes of the site plan review and provides separation between commercial and residential uses. D, there are special circumstances of the location that make compliance with a Class III buffer on the entirety of the site and unnecessary burden on the applicant. And E is a combination of a Class II buffer and a Class III buffer as depicted on the site plan improves the current buffering. It will not adversely affect the abutting landowners or impact the general health, safety, and welfare of the town.
Second. Okay, Jim made a motion for waiver number three, and Martina seconded. All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, five to zero to approve. Thank you very much.
Is it too soon to go with the completeness?
It's not too soon, because with, that's where, that's next, because now you've granted the waiver, so with the waivers from those submitted, you can make a motion for completeness.
I moved with the granting of the requested waivers, that CM, with the granting of the requested waivers, that CM Brown application for a convenience store and fueling station is complete.
Second. So motion by Jim that we have a complete application, seconded by Robert. All in favor? Five, zero.
So now we can move on to the discussion items, and remember, this, since this is a new application, you can bring up other items. We've already discussed A, which is the revision to the landscape plans, and you've already granted a waiver for that. The water, it was just a reminder that they did get the variance that was required. Since this is a new application, I'm just going over the highlights really quickly. The sidewalks, as you remember, the.
Just one point on here is that should be April 17, 2024, on the third line.
Yes.
See preliminary approval letter dated, is that, say, is it supposed to be April?
October, I'm sorry, it should be October 17, 2024.
2024. Thank you.
It's 25, right?
Good catch. Sidewalks, we've already, we had that discussion. They will be putting an escrow for the sidewalks per the letter that's in your packet, that was in your packet previously, and it's in the motion as well. They're not required to put it along the entire frontage, but just along the driveways. An escrow, they're not building it, they're escrowing it. At the last planning board meeting, because we never got to substantive discussion, we did receive comment from one of the planning board members about noise. And so that is something that we didn't discuss, except for that we did require that they put a sign on the fence saying that it's not for overnight parking and no long-term idling, I believe is what the signs. And I'm going to back up a little bit, too. If you remember back in October 15th, when you approved it the first time around, there were some other items that needed to be added to the plan. One of them was the faux windows and shutters. They did all of those things, and those plans did come back to us to be signed, and they were signed by you, and they're sitting in my office. So they did take care of all of the hanging fruit that was still out there when you guys gave the approval, but you had some conditions. They took care of those conditions. But since this is a new application, the, the noise issue has been addressed or brought up by one planning board member. So if you wanted to discuss that, you could do that. And other than that, that's the only things that I have.
So I did raise this issue regarding the noise issue, and after further review, I saw, I view that this is now a commercial zone. And if you go by the state guidelines, commercial zone is for 75 decibels at 50, at the property line, and it's from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, 65 decibels from 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM. And just to note, the trucks probably will be at around 85 decibels in their, in their noise at that point in time. 85 decibels from an OSHA standard is, for an eight-hour period of time, requires hearing protection. So yesterday, I went and, went to the site to do a sidewalk, and I went with Mr. McConkey, and we specifically talked about this particular item, and he was perfectly fine with the noise condition that it's going to be, be there. So I would, you know, look to see that we define what is termed as long-term parking or long-term idling, if we do, to make a change to that. Because long-term idling could imply, you know, four hours, six hours, eight hours. But I think we need to define what long-term is.
I don't think CM Brown would put up with it in a long-term idling spot.
If you went to the store to buy something, that's, that's one year a lot.
If that became a habit.
You gotta go.
Can you tell us what the sign's red? I can't, I can't remember.
I don't know if we specified a color. One thing on the decibels, too.
It's decibel, yeah.
That helps is with the six-foot fence with the PVC slats in it, that's going to deaden the noise quite a bit, actually.
Oh, sure.
The property line, so that's another thing that'll help. But, yeah, we can do whatever you want with the sign.
So what did, what did you guys want on the sign, I guess?
Well, do we have to allow idling at all?
Whether you allow it or not, you know what people are going to do.
Well, I don't think we're as concerned about the automobiles as we are about 18-wheelers.
Right, right.
There's not going to be a ton of 18-wheeler traffic there. It's going to be more the single units.
You can, you can go one way or the other, right? There's going to be, the truck's going to be sitting there at 85 decibels. If a guy stops and puts in it, stops the idle, there's going to, the air brakes are going to run, those are 110 decibels. So you, you choose your poison, right, at that point in time? And again, I go by the butler, and Scott was all, he had no issues with the sound issues, even though I highlighted, we talked about it twice. Scott.
They don't have the sound travels there, and Shane had one of the giant dump trucks, plumb trucks, and I never heard him come in.
Yeah.
He'd go right through there, and you'd never hear him.
Do you want to put a time on that? I mean, is that where you're going with this?
I would think we would want to have a time.
Do we say 15 minutes?
No longer than.
No term, yeah.
No, no long-term.
No overnight parking.
Like 15 minutes or 10 minutes or whatever we think would be for a filling to.
Who's going to enforce that, though? You know, I mean, I just feel like it, no, no overnight parking or long-term idling.
But the idling thing really, it applies to 18-wheelers, not my truck going in there.
Right. Oh, unless you have a loud, loud truck.
I know.
Yeah, some people.
But I'm just suggesting that if you put a time on it, that would, I mean, to your point, I mean, what does long-term mean to you or to you? I mean, to some people, it could mean an hour, and I think an hour would be too long. So.
As long as it takes to fill up the state, to fill up a tank and beyond.
Get on the sandwich and chips and go.
15 minutes?
15 minutes.
Does that work for you guys?
15 minutes.
I'll do whatever you guys want.
15 should work. I mean, if they're the high-speed diesel pumps for the, if a tractor clearly does pull in there, but maybe 20, go with 20 or something.
Go in and get their coffee.
Because in case he can't decide what he wants for lunch.
I would say a half hour. You never know how fast the fuel's going to jump out of there.
Especially if there's a line or something.
I've been on those trucks moving fuel my entire life as a kid, and you never know how long it's going to take to fill a fuel tank. Just weather dependent and.
I just didn't want it to be open-ended. That was my, that was my concern.
I think we need some leeway on that.
It takes them a while to do that. Their truck's going to be there for a few moments in the ground.
No idling more than 30 minutes.
So no overnight parking or over 30 minutes of idling. However, they could fit that on a sign.
Yeah.
That'd be fine.
Okay, got it. I just want to say thank you, Marty, for looking up all of that and for going there and meeting with, I think that's awesome that you went that extra mile. Thank you.
Good job, Marty.
Part of the gig.
Yes.
Well, so you.
So the next order of business is the draft findings of fact, section 908.
Yep, you want me to just read through those?
Sure.
As we go through it? Okay.
And I went through these, but it's good for me to have them read, read to me, just to make sure something hasn't changed or I've missed something.
That's all right. Okay, so site plan review, section 908, criteria standards, we're going to do the findings of fact here. Item number one is preservation of landscape, 908, A through B. The applicant is proposing to construct a new 5,000-square-foot convenience store and fuel station at the corner of Sand Road and Route 302. The site is surrounded by mostly residential properties and is predominantly wooded, vegetated in the back. Limit of the work areas are labeled the site plan. Clearing limits for trees are shown on C-101. The project is located within 500 feet of the Crooked River and is within the watershed The project is located within five hundred feet of the Crooked River and is within the watershed of Sebago Lake, which required an MDP permit. The permit has been received and can be found on tab three of site plan application dated February twelfth, twenty twenty-five. Number two, buffers and landscaping, nine oh eight point two, A through, A through zero, A through O. Landscaping consisting of predominantly native trees and shrubs, including red, including red chokeberry, shadlo service berry, black chokeberry, sugar maple, autumn blaze maple, incredible hydrangea, stella dora daylily, casino gold juniper, compact fitza juniper, eastern red cedar, dwarf purple blue meringue, lilacs, basswood, and dandelion berry is shown surrounding the development. Clearing limits for the existing trees are shown on C dash one oh one, and new plantings are shown on drawing L one hundred, the landscape plan. The dumpster will be screened by chain link fence with privacy slats per section nine oh eight point two H. According to section nine oh eight point two F, a Class Three buffer as defined, as defined in nine oh eight two A is required between commercial and residential properties. The applicant requested a waiver to allow a Class Two along McConkey and Graves property lines. A Class, Class Three buffer has been added where, where practical. Item three, relation of proposed buildings to the environment, nine oh eight, three, eight, A through J. Architectural building design details have been provided in the application package. Front, rear, and side elevations were provided with the submittals. These elevations include the addition of faux windows and shutters that were required on Route three, on Route three oh two in the rear elevation as a condition of prior planning board approval. Four, vehicular access, nine oh eight point four, A through J. The applicant is proposing to have two, two-way driveways off Route three oh two for vehicular ingress and egress. The proposed width of the driveways is forty feet, which meets the Naples driveway and entrance ordinance and land use ordinance. Land use order. Per section nine oh eight four D, the applicant demonstrated that the entrance exit is located at least fifty feet from the closest unsignalized intersection and one hundred feet from the closest signalized intersection. The distance to Sand Road, unsignalized, is one hundred and fifty-three feet. The nearest signalized intersection is greater than four thousand eight hundred feet. The project required a DOT traffic movement permit, which has been received, see tab number four in the site plan application materials. According to section nine oh eight point four C, where a lot has frontage on two or more streets, preliminary access should be from the lot, must be, access from the lot must be provided from the street where there is less potential for traffic congestion. The project has frontage on both Sand Road and Route three oh two. This requires a waiver, which was requested by the applicant, to the couple that date in February eleventh, twenty twenty-five. The existing dirt road that extends from Sand Road will be removed and re-vegetated, as shown on sheet three hundred, sheet C three hundred and L one hundred, the landscape plan. Parking and circulation internal, nine oh eight point five, A through H. Nine parking spaces are provided in front of the store with twelve fueling positions, included in the parking calculation. The applicant bases configuration on similar sites. The requirement for one point five parking spaces per five hundred feet does not apply. This standard found in section five oh eight point four dot C, limited allowances of light manufacturing in the commercial district is only for light manufacturing use. Snow storage areas are identified on sheet two, C two hundred. The applicant added signs stating no overnight parking or long-term idling.
We're going to change that.
Which we just changed to be-
Not to exceed thirty minutes.
Not to exceed thirty minutes along the buffer fence, as required as a condition of the prior planning board approval. Per nine oh eight five B, parking must be to the rear and side of the commercial buildings. While the intent of the parking ordinance appears to be met due to the configuration of the building, parking is located at the front of the commercial building. The applicant has requested a waiver for clarity. Nine oh eight, per nine oh eight five point G, arrows, crosswalks, and other directional and pedestrian markings must be included on the site plan. These markings are included on C dash two hundred, site plan dated twelve, two, twelve, twenty twenty-five, and L one hundred, the landscape plan dated four, ten, twenty twenty-five. Vehicle direction arrows are shown on egress, ingress, and egress, as well as delineation of parking spaces, of accessible parking spaces. Six, storm water, storm water management, nine oh eight point six, A through J. Stormwater will be treated on-site by the, by the grass, underdrained soil filter pond located west of the development. The applicant has provided sizing calculations for the filtration pond, which is adequate to handle the runoff levels leaving the site. Additional stormwater management infrastructure includes catch basins, manholes, and storm drain pipes. The project has been designed to comply with DEP Chapter five hundred stormwater management practices. The stormwater management plan was reviewed by DEP, see tab number three. The applicant has attached stormwater runoff calculations, demonstrating that post-development runoff leaving the site would not exceed pre-development levels. The applicant has provided phosphorus calculations that demonstrate that the development will not increase phosphorus levels to the Crooked River. The applicant submitted a technical review memo dated October second, twenty twenty-four from Cumberland County Soil and Water Conservation District. The review, the review concluded that the plans meet applicable standards for stormwater management and erosion and sediment control. Number seven, utilities and public safety, nine oh eight seven, A through D. Per nine oh eight seven A, the development will not overburden the public infrastructure, as demonstrated by stormwater and utility plans and other infrastructure improvements, including on the site plan and submittals. Per nine oh eight seven B, all utilities proposed to serve the project will be installed underground. In accordance with section nine oh eight seven C, any structure with an automatic fire alarm system must comply with the Town of Naples Key Lock Box Ordinance. See letter from the fire chief on tab six. In accordance with section nine oh eight seven D, new structures built after June first, twenty sixteen, must be equipped with a fully addressable monitored fire alarm system. Eight, exterior lighting, nine oh eight point eight, A through H. The applicant has provided an updated photometric plan dated ten seven twenty-four, showing the lighting location on the building and pump stations and the foot candle levels meeting the town standards. The plan does not have any light poles that exceed thirty feet in height, per section nine oh eight eight H. The applicant, yeah, the applicant, okay, Marty?
Yeah, okay.
The applicant has demonstrated that the site lighting meets or exceeds the ordinance requirement at the property lines and will not create adverse impacts. The applicant has delineated and shown the number of new lights to be added to the building, pump stations, under canopy, and surrounding parking area on the photometric plan dated ten seven twenty-four. Number nine, hazards and nuisances, nine oh eight, nine, nine oh eight point nine, A to G. No flammable explosive liquids, solids, or gases will be stored in bulk above the ground. Nine oh eight nine A and four oh eight nine F. Adequate provisions shall be made to control noise, vibrations, et cetera. The development will not result in violation of any noise control provisions in effect to the Town of Naples or state. Ten, signs. A new twenty-foot-tall freestanding illuminated pile-on sign shown, shown on the plan on drawing C twenty, I'm sorry, C two hundred. The applicant will comply with the sign permitting process and adhere to the sign ordinance. Eleven, municipal services. No adverse effect on municipal services will result from the project. We move on to the conclusions of law.
Keep stopping vote for these if you wanted to at this point. Vote that it, vote on the criteria of nine oh eight, that meets the criteria of nine oh eight.
Make a motion that it meets the criteria of section nine oh eight.
Second.
Second?
Yep.
Sue made a second?
Yes.
Okay, so motion by Jim that it meets criteria nine oh eight, second by Sue. All in favor? Two, three, four, five, five, zero. Thank you. Want to conclusions?
Yes.
Okay, conclusions of law. Number one, the landscape will or will not be preserved in its natural state insofar as practical, practicable by minimizing tree and soil removal, retaining existing vegetation when and where desirable, keep and keep any grades in character with the general appearance of the neighboring areas. Landscape will. Everybody agree, will?
Will.
Well, okay.
You want to vote for that, so you can have a vote reach?
Yep. So we'll vote. That was a five to zero, that it will.
Yeah.
Okay, number two, landscaping and buffering will or will not be, be designed and installed to define, soften, or screen the appearance of the project and abutting properties.
Will.
Will.
Will. Five wills, five zero. Number three, the proposed structures will or will not be related harmoniously to the terrain into existing buildings in the vicinity.
Will.
Five wills, five wills. Five, zero. Number four, the proposed layout of access points will or will not be designed so as to avoid adverse impact on existing vehicular and pedestrian traffic.
Will.
Access points will, five wills, okay. Five, zero. The layout and design of all means of vehicular and pedestrian circulation will or will not be safe and convenient?
Will.
Will. Five wills, five wills. Adequate provisions will or will not be made for surface drainage, so that removal of surface waters will or will not adversely affect neighboring properties downstream or the public storm drainage system.
Will and then will not.
Yep, will and will not. Everybody, five, okay. Seven, the site plan will or will not show provisions for utilities and public safety?
Will.
Okay, five, five wills. All exterior lighting will or will not be designed to minimize adverse impact on, impact on neighboring properties and public ways?
Will.
Okay, five wills, five, okay. Number nine, adequate provisions will or will not be made to control noise, vibration, smoke, heat, glare, fumes, dust, toxic matter, odors, and electromagnetic interference.
Will.
Will. Five, five. And ten, advertising features will or will not detract from the design of the proposed building and structures.
Will not.
Excuse me. Five will nots, five will nots. The proposed development will or will not adhere to the start, the sign standards outlined in the ordinance.
Will.
Will, five wills, five wills.
It's time. I'd like to make a motion to approve the request by CM Brown Company for a new convenience store and fueling station located at ninety-nine Roosevelt Trail. Map lots U six oh seven and U six oh eight, in a commercial zoning district, as submitted and represented to the planning board with the following findings of fact and conditions of approval. At the April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five planning board meeting, the following waivers were granted. Naples, A, Naples Land Use Ordinance nine oh eight point four point E, vehicular access, to waive the necessity of having the entrance be from Sand Road in favor of having the access on Route three oh two. B, Naples Land Use nine oh eight point B, parking and circulation, to waive the requirement of parking being located at the rear or side of the commercial building. C, Naples Land Use Ordinance nine oh eight point two point A and nine oh eight point two point F, to waive the necessity of having a Class Three buffer along the McConkey and Graves property lines and allow a Class Two buffer in that location. Two, the planning board found that the waiver request met the criteria found in nine oh five point one, point A, dot A through D of the Naples Land Use Ordinance. Three, with granting of the above waivers, the planning board found the application met the submission requirements found in section nine oh seven of the Naples Land Use Ordinance, and that the application was complete. Number four, the planning board found that the application met the criteria and standards in section nine oh eight of the Naples Land Use Ordinance. Number five, no building permits are to be issued until sidewalk escrow is received, per Road Commission's memo dated October eleventh, twenty twenty-four, equalling ten thousand forty-eight dollars, and five oh four point three point F of the Naples Land Use Ordinance.
Second. Motion in a second by Robert for the approval. All in favor? One, two, three, four, five.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you all. Thank you for accommodating. You know that you did my scheduling.
I think the people that were here earlier probably like those. Welcome.
Now we'll get a notice of decision out quickly for this one.
Thank you very much.
Okay, move on to item seven. Any public participation from planning board matters? Change done? Nobody's here? Other business, our next meeting is May sixth?
That's correct, and we do have lots of applications, so we are meeting. Our May twentieth meeting will be canceled because it is town meeting. So we will not have a meeting on May twentieth.
Because they're going to be voting in this one.
Yeah, so you'll have a break. The other thing, under other business, I just wanted to see if you guys would give approval for Doug to sign the notice of a decision, so it doesn't have to come back to the next meeting if I produce a notice of decision for CM Brown.
I make a motion, we let Doug sign it as soon as it's ready.
Oh, second.
Second.
Okay, we have motion in a second for that? Motion by Jim, second, by the Sula, Robert, all in favor? Same for, I won't vote for it, so. Okay, we can get this to where we need to be.
Motion of Jim.
Oh, oh, in a second.
Yes.
Only because this was a lot of, this was a lot of information, and I know you guys have heard this from us before. But any chance we could get the next meeting stuff?
I would love to, but I'm just telling you, I'd be slammed. I mean, between appeals and cost land.
I know they don't always give it to us early.
Actually, they have to get it in thirty days, or else we don't put it on the agenda, unless it's a special circumstance, you know, like where they come to a meeting, you guys ask for something, but you say they can come back to the next meeting, but we are pretty strict about the thirty-day deadline. It's just the nature of the beast right now.
So we have the stuff that they put in, so I mean, we should have the stuff from May fifth.
I, I, that's a good ques, I mean, would you like to have the applica, what, what they have ahead of time? Even, and then we'll send out a complete packet when it's available, because I could do that.
Just to give us a heads up.
Give us a heads up. So I, so I could, I could do that, is if, if we have the electronic submittal, get it to you sooner. But yeah, it's just the nature of the beast, and I do have an update before we're at it.
This was really tight in my work time and-
Yeah, no, I get it.
Available times to get that.
I get it. In this case, there wasn't a lot of new stuff for this one, to be honest with you. I mean, you've already seen it multiple times. But I was going to ask you guys one more thing, and it's just on the tip of my tongue. It was related to that, and I can't remember what it is. Oh, I know what it was, an update, because, because we've had appeals and so many things going on, I've been really busy. I wanted to give you an update on the cell phone tower, because you guys approved that, and the Board of Appeals approved the variance for the height. The appeal period has elapsed now, and we have not received anything. They, for the appeal to the planning board was thirty days, the appeal to the zoning board, appeals decision was forty-five days, forty-five days was April eleventh. That being said, the post office is a little sluggish, so it's possible that we could get something in the mail that's postmarked, so. But as of now, we have not received an appeal for that, so that I anticipate they'll be submitting building permits very shortly. And that's all I have for tonight.
Okay, now, Marty.